Mr. Reed, Mr. Parr.
Yeah.
All right. We call this board supervisor meeting to order this September 13th. If we could all rise for a moment of silence. All right, we will now do the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Barton.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for coming today. We are now going to go to the public comments section at this time. We have a couple of people who've signed up to speak. The rules of the meeting are as so that you will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, please specify the group. And the chair may recognize that you get a couple more minutes for a total of five minutes. At this time, we will have Mr. Reed as the timekeeper. You have two seconds to sign, 30 second warning, and stop. So that'll give you some kind of indication of where you're at. We currently have two people. Mr. Steve Bane, come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, thank you, Board of Supervisors. Steve Bane, 620 Farinob Climb, Nellis Ford, Virginia, 22958. Members of Board Supervisors, please, please view the big picture of Route 151 corridor. Route 151 is struggling chronically and increasingly to service volume along the Route 151 corridor. Rapid development combined with explosive agro tourism accelerating commuter volume. My wife and I moved here in 2018. This fact is so apparent to us. Just look at social media. You will see a multitude of residents with stories of unsafe conditions. We know that the time to act is now. Responsible parties in this room, including Board Supervisors, Planning Department, Planning Commission, VDOT, must plan and execute effectively, both strategically and tactically, in order to avert further tragic but avoidable growing pain for Nelson County. As my wife and I observed in the recent comprehensive plan workshops, the residents were essentially unanimous in explicitly avoiding Route 151 corridor for further material development. In fact, the work groups focused solely on limited growth and development targeted for the eastern half of Nelson County, avoiding Route 151 corridor altogether. They cited the already known overgrown status of Route 151 corridor and the need to protect land with closest proximity to the Blue Ridge Mountains. They cited the concept of targeting limited growth and development to areas in Nelson County that could benefit from development and serve as locations for lower cost housing. One work group presented the idea of plinking pedestrian lanes along a smaller route. Wouldn't even consider the dangerous idea of such lanes along Route 151. A smaller route would run west-east and would also provide connection with the Blue Ridge Parkway South Elementary. Work group also presented a plea for cease allowing 18-wheelers to cut across Route 6 between Route 29 and Route 151, citing the significant contribution to the unsafe conditions on Route 151. Finally, most of the work groups cited the short-term rentals, Airbnb's, as a leading problematic source of undesirable sprawl along Route 151 corridor, pleading county leadership for significant regulation. I implore VDOT to use a more holistic approach to implementing traffic, tactical traffic solutions on Route 151, particularly the requirements for turn lanes and/or deceleration lanes. There is one underneath degree disconnect between the VDOT playbook as described to me and what is well-known by county residents, a region of Route 151.
30 seconds.
It is just not possible for so many residents to be so wrongly, to be so wrong regarding the unsafe conditions. Even Blue Mountain Brewery offered to have a turn lane and absorb part of the cost. This offer was refused. Renaissance Ridge developer has compared his planned entrance way under that.
Please wrap up your thoughts, sir.
I'm sorry.
Please wrap up your thoughts.
All the Renaissance Ridge high-density development, not planning to have a turn lane, is still a degree is. If VDOT will not do the right thing requiring a turn lane.
Okay, sir.
We need our county leadership to step in and implore them to do so.
Thank you, sir. Edith Napier.
Good afternoon. I am Edith Napier, 43, Napier Road, Arlington, Virginia. As Chairperson of the Nelson County Department of Social Services Board, I wanted to publicly thank this board for putting the new building for the Nelson County Department of Social Services as a priority. I wanted you to know that we have an active working group consisting of the Director of the Department of Social Services, another member of the Department of Social Services, two Department of Social Services Board members, and also, I understand, two of the Board Supervisors members. We just request that the Director of Department of Social Services be notified in advance of all meetings regarding the construction or infrastructure for the new building. We are ready to get to work and we want to thank you publicly and will thank you privately. But this is a giant step forward that's well overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak today? Robert?
This is a long order. Robert Hensway, 3254, Dutch Creek Lane, Jefferson. When I was looking through the documents for the meeting, the safe roads and program that's proposed, I wasn't able to read it all. But I hope that in terms of what safety they're talking about, we especially emphasize pedestrians and bicycles. There's been a number of people killed. If we're going to get people out of their cars, it's time to change purposes. We ought to at least make it safer to walk and to ride bicycles, especially for kids.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Hill?
Good afternoon, I'm David Hill, Sheriff of Nelson. Just wanted to point out something quick that I've noticed here in the last couple of weeks and also a citizen mentioned. Cup Creek Road is needing some attention for the ditch areas due to the rain and VDOTs here. But there are some areas where if you do not have a total drive vehicle, you can't pass because the ditches are so deep. So if you don't maybe mention that, that'd be great.
Thank you. VDOT, take note. There you go. Anyone else wish to speak? That's another hand going up. Nope. All right. We will now close the public comment section at this time. Moving forward to the consent agenda, we have several items. We had to make a quick revision to the budget amendment, correct, staff?
Yes.
All right. It doesn't look like that was anything major. It's the chair's recommendation that we approve the consent agenda. Mr. Reed, did you have an edit to the minutes?
I have, I have a real small technical edit. June 14th minutes. Page nine at the top after the resolution where it mentions Resolution R 2022-35 about transportation funding for smart scale. Number two is actually Route 6 slash Route 151, 61.
Really?
A tiny thing, but I saw it today, but I better bring it.
Excellent. It is the chair's recommendation that we approve the consent agenda with the revision of the budget amendment and as Mr. Reed has noted for the minutes. So we have much for Mr. Parr, do we have a second? Second for Mr. Harvey, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll do a vote by affirmation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, abstentions? Hearing none, let the record reflect that this was unanimous vote. Moving on to presentations. VDOT.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Sayer. I'm with VDOT and Rob, he apologized, he has a family matter couldn't be here today, so I'm taking place off.
Tell him we're thinking about it.
Thank you. I'll let him know. Oh, wanted to update you all on Route 722 Glade Road. I got a word from the vendor that the structure is tentatively going to be delivered in south of our fault. And we'll have work prior to that to get the stream being ready, get the old structure out. So we can, as soon as it gets there, we can go ahead and assemble that. 814 Campbell Mountain, just finished that last Friday equipment, last shot on that. So that's rural rustic is complete. 687 North Fork, they have started on that, they put the pipe in on that. Hopefully next week we'll lay the base down and try to get that sealed before one time. And the Route 620 that we just opened last Friday, the surface repairs, we got several in the county to do and we'll do those next week. And we'll get the permanent repairs on Route 620. And Mr. Parr, Robert did want to apologize for the pipe not getting put in on Lowesville Road last week, but they did, should have completed that.
They're doing it.
Matt. Thank you.
That's all the updates I had for the board. I have to have Mr. Hill's color about Cup Creek, yes, sir.
All right, does anybody have any notes that we need to send to VDOT, Mr. Barton?
Gladstone, Greenfield Drive, are you familiar?
Yes, sir.
What, they paved it from either end. But there, the mile is a mile in between that they have plans to do that.
With my knowledge of the rural rustic resolution that was just passed, I did not see that on the list. I can, I can note it in.
No. Why not? Can you tell me why not?
Is it any houses in between those, in between that section?
Well, there's housing on the road, you know.
On the inside of the road. I would think it would have to do that there's probably no residential houses in that section. And it was constructed on each end to get them out of the dust. And probably had moved any further with any like that.
Do you have no plans to do that?
To my knowledge, no, sir.
Anything else for Sparky? Mr. Harvey? Mr. Reed?
Want to repeat some things that I said last month that look like they're still in the same state. While you're looking at Cup Creek Road, if you're going down Rockfish Highway by Bold Rock, cross from, on the same side of the 151 as Bold Rock just before you get to Horizons Village Road, there's a deep drop-off just kind of midway between the entrance to Bold Rock and the entrance to Horizons Village. It's on the east side. Please take a look at that, I don't think that's gotten filled and it's a, it's a deep one. And Spruce Creek Lane, where that comes into Rockfish Highway, there's lots of debris still and actually preceded the big, you know, the big snow and rains that we have on the south side of Spruce Creek Lane, not far from where it dumps out into Rockfish Highway. So if you could take a look at those and check the sightlines. It looks like you could be cutting back some on the banks, especially if someone turns to go south if you're coming off Spruce Creek going south on the highway. Take a look at the sightlines there and see if you could do some work and make it easier for folks to see folks coming downhill.
Anything else, Mr. Reed?
That is it, thank you.
All right, then we got Mr. Parr.
Your comment on North Fork, were they rural rustic? Yes, sir. Okay, so were you all aware of the recent storm damage on the upper end? I said something to Robert about it, but.
I know, I know we've been in the repair mode for the last six, all registered to the rains, but I don't know if everything has been completed.
It was, somebody had sent a message to us and I forwarded it on and I wrote up there. And it's on the upper side of North Fork, but it is a lot of runoff. And then I'll just reiterate what Sheriff Hill said on Cup Creek. I had gotten some pictures on that too, it was pretty bad. That, that too is on the arid side of the hill, close to the. The rural rustic side and just a few years back. Right.
Right. Lovingston, after the torrential downpour, where we got seven inches in just a few hours. Some of the residents, obviously culvert pipes, you mentioned Glade Road, which we appreciate that being expeditionally, expeditiously being done. Bus routes have been changed a good bit and trying to get kids back in a regular route is important. Thank you so, thank you for the update there. Lovingston, I know there was a meeting. Robert, and I'm not sure if you guys were in attendance at Front Street in reference to.
I was not, but I'm aware of the meeting.
Aware of it, you don't know too many of the details of this.
I do not.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I'll just wait till Robert gets a chance to talk to them. The only other thing that someone had mentioned, some trees on Laurel, and I can't remember what, what side of Laurel it was on, so I have to email you. All right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anything else that you forgot, VDOT report? All right, moving on to Route 151 corridor study. Rick.
Good afternoon, it is a pleasure to be back here again, see the board. My name is Rick Youngler, I'm the District Planning Manager for VDOT Lynchburg District, of which Nelson County is in our district. So, you know, we've already heard today some concerns with Route 151 corridor. Back in 2012, 2013 was our first run at one corridor wide study on 151. Mr. Harvey remembers that, he was a partner on that study. And we've heard from Mr. Reed in this past year in regards to concerns up there and some of the other ongoing issues. And so I was able to push forward this suggestion again that we updated the study and we secured funding to do so. And what I'm here today to do is give you that kind of front-end load of the study and the information regarding it and how we're going to be moving forward. So the study area is going to be very similar to what we looked at before. Route 6 and 151 up at Afton. And we're going to go just a little bit beyond, about two miles beyond Beach Grove Road, looking at some of the curves through there as well for geometric safety and operations concerns along through the corridor. And we know that, you know, over the, from the last study that we did, we've had a number of successful applications off turn, right offset turn lane. We've had intersection improvements either funded through the smart scale program or through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, ACIP. We have conducted traffic counts already. We pulled data from last fall and we've done the counts as far as this past summer, with schooling session, without schooling session. We're trying to get an idea of what the tourist travel patterns are looking like up and down through the corridor. So just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at for in September, consultants are currently looking at existing conditions. That's through the traffic count, looking at accident history, freight movements through the corridor, bike pedestrian issues, looking at all of that information in order to tie into the recommendations as we move forward. And as you see, as we go forward here, looking at the operational analysis, we'll be using a program called Syncro where we run analysis, operation analysis up and down through the corridor. There will be off-peak and peak hour movements through that as well as we can traffic patterns. That's going to take place pretty much as the study is ongoing and as we move through. December through April will be the recommendations development. We'll be looking specifically at intersection improvements, corridor-wide safety improvements, picking a look in Nellis Ford specifically for bike ped improvements and traffic calming through that area. And then one of the concerns that Mr. Reed brought up, really the multimodal strategies through the entire area. That's not only including bike ped issues, but also, you know, transit junk and other on-call, on-demand duty area. In May, as spring releases, we'll be providing conceptual designs and estimates. And we're looking at a completion date of next summer to have this all wrapped up. Now, another one thing that everybody's interested in is the public involvement phase. You know, because of COVID, we've really minimized a lot of the face-to-face interactions. But with this study, we will have two public engagement sessions. One in October here coming up, which will be a face-to-face meeting at one of the locations along the corridor. I think last time we did Rockfish, Rockfish Road Community Center, and I believe we used the elementary school for one of the other ones. So we'll be working with Candy and the board members to find the appropriate locations for that. We will also have another one in March as our wrap-up. Everybody looking at the, you know, the conceptuals and seeing how the final recommendations are coming forward. And then one of the things that's not shown on here is we will conduct an online MetroQuest survey. This will give everybody an opportunity to take a look at the corridor, existing conditions, put their two cents worth of their public knowledge into that survey in order to help us, VDOT and consultants, come up with the best plan of action for the corridor. We've had success with MetroQuest, not only through Thomas Jefferson BDC's efforts, but also all of our study efforts that have been done over the last couple of years. We typically see anywhere from 200 to 300 inputs into the survey. Now, these particular public engagement sessions, I'll tell you, one of the things that we're looking at is the anticipated public interest. I believe the two sessions that we had back in 2013, we had no less than 80 folks that turned up to the public involvement. I believe the elementary school may have had about 130. So the folks that along the Nellis Ford corridor are very invested in the corridor and they have strong interest and strong support, community support. And that's one of the things we've always enjoyed about working through the 151 corridor is because citizens come out and they provide their input into the process, which is very important. We'll pull 2013 previous study recommendations to see what needs to be updated with that. But this is kind of more of a quick hit on the effort that's undertaken now. We will be leaning heavily on Mr. Harvey and Mr. Reed as champions, you know, for this particular study and have you guys regularly involved in that process as board members working with your constituents. That's only going to make the study more successful as we move through. So I'm happy to answer any questions and anybody on my end.
Any questions for Rick at this time? Mr. Reed?
I just have one and I know this is early to bring something up that might be more appropriate to bring up during this process. But since 2013, you know, we have literally dozens of of properties that have come before the Planning Commission and the Board Supervisors for event spaces and large events. And my understanding is that A1 by right allows, you know, A1 zoning allows by right events of up to 1,000 people, which is, you know, which is something we need to deal with eternally, of course. But for this, in the busy season like we saw last weekend, a single event pretty much by itself was able to, you know, gridlock 151 for a period which made it really difficult for fire and rescue to do calls from that event. And, and that was, was really problematic. And I've heard from numerous people about this. So I'm just wondering, or at least putting out there that I would love to see some kind of analysis about maximum traffic flow and maximum build-out for things like that along the corridor because it boggles my mind what is allowable along that corridor that property owners can do even without having to get special permits for it. So those areas that are event spaces that clearly are booked and deals and things like this, I'd like to see some analysis on that.
Well, I'm assuming the event you guys received from your VDOT plan.
I believe so, I believe it's part of the payment permit process.
So what we would be happy to do is get that information, retrieve that, use that as part of our analysis for special case scenarios. It should not be a big goal to do a little bit of a visual analysis for major events since we're already going to be in the operational analysis review.
Appreciate that, thank you so much. And thank you for doing this, again, for getting this moving at the same time we've got our comp plan going so that we can use this information in that process, thanks.
The next, the data makes sense. Is that completion of the study?
Yes, sir. It's completion, we plan on having it completed by June, July of next year.
And this study is directed towards making this corridor safer?
Correct.
Including restraining areas and.
Right, so we look at, you know, from a VDOT perspective, when we get into the operational analysis, one, we already noted that there's accident history and there's ABT issues from peak hour, hot peak hour. Working with the county, we understand there's other components that need to be looked at as well, which hopefully this study will help assist the county moving forward with some of their decision-making. But we look at the geometrics, operations, and safety of the corridor itself, try to bring those up to standards and make investments into future smart scale or Highway Safety Improvement Program type funding projects.
So you ought to recognize this is a dangerous quarter. How much does money come into providing the improvements? I mean, how much does VDOT, in terms of what they do, based on how much it costs?
Well, one of the things that we look at when we go through studies is we look at all of the different funding streams that VDOT has available. Nelson County has participated in revenue share. We've, Nelson County's had ACIP, Highway Safety Improvement monies that have become available and we've also gotten really good projects through the smart scale program. Each one of those funding streams have different timeframes from which the money can come on board. Revenue share comes on board much quicker. And if it's, say, it's a $2 million project, the county's willing to come up with a million, VDOT kick a million in and the project can be done usually within a shorter timeframe. When it's smart scale, you know, right now, the application period for the applications that were just submitted will not see any type of first money until about 2028. So there are long timeframes on some of the funding streams. And then you're in a six-year cycle for completion for a project. ACIP funding can come on a lot sooner. And what our hopes in this particular corridor is, in order to secure ACIP money, you have to be able to a certain threshold with the benefit cost ratio. And we're hoping to see a number of projects come out here where we can get Highway Safety money put on a project and get projects done a lot faster. So revenue share ACIP much quicker, smart scale longer term.
And so if you decide in '23 that this is preferable to, the chances are unless the county comes up with a certain amount of money, that could happen until '28?
Correct. This is, this is why it's always important to have partnerships with the developers themselves as part of the process. And we're hoping to be able to provide this data to the county to possibly make some, you know, changes, recommendations in your comp plans and how you guys move forward. You know, we'll probably see a preponderance eternally improvements. That would be part of, you know, the necessary process from a safety standpoint along the corridor. But it depended upon the funding stream, it could be years before you can see that program taken undertaking.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Rick. All right, moving on to Mr. Blunt. David.
Happy to be here, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for your time this afternoon. Wanted to just spend a few minutes giving you a little brief legislative update and then turn your attention to, believe it or not, 2023 General Assembly Session that began in January. You probably will recall the close of fiscal year '22. State revenues came in almost $2 billion above projections. You couple that with some expenditures that did not have to happen, some budget transfers and actual budget surplus is about $3 billion. So it's a lot of money that's still rolling into state coffers in Richmond. As far as the revenue is concerned, as you may recall from the past, whenever there's a state surplus, a lot of that is already spoken for. A good chunk of it goes to the state's rainy day fund, the reserves, the savings account. There are funds that are directed to the water quality improvement fund as well as some funds for transportation. And then this year, with the approval of the fiscal year '23 and '24 state budget, which didn't happen until June, the General Assembly included a number of contingency items. And those funding items were contingent on there being a revenue surplus at the end of fiscal year in June. So since the revenue, the revenues were ahead of projections, a number of those contingency items were funded. Probably most significant for us in the local government world relates to the Virginia retirement system. Probably most significant for us in the local government world relates to the Virginia retirement system. And they put an additional $250 million into VRS to help offset the ever-growing unfunded pension liabilities that the fund faces. The other thing that's of significance, I think, as we move forward with the budget is that Governor Youngkin had announced when he presented to the money committees last month that he will come forward with a little less than $400 million, a proposal for the General Assembly to consider an additional tax relief in the next budget. And remember, there was a significant tax relief provided this past year. He wants to provide a little bit more. So the state budget process actually is underway at the state level. State agencies had to submit their budget request by the end of last week. So they'll go through their review process at the state level. And then in the middle of December, Governor Youngkin will present his proposed amendments to the existing year state budget. So as we move into 2023, it is a short session, 46 days. I think January 11th to the latter part of February. It is an election year. All 100 seats in the House of Delegates as well as the 40 seats in the state senate are up for election. And as you know from redistricting, Nelson County's House and Senate districts are going to look different next year. So in my pool of that, you will have perhaps a new, and I know at least one new representative because I know in the House of Delegates, there's not an existing incumbent who is part of the Nelson County district anymore. I think it's going to be a session where we're going to be playing some defense on some issues, particularly in the land use area. Hearing that with regard to short-term rentals, which I know you all are discussing, that the industry is going to be coming forward with some proposals that would have the effect of limiting local authority. We recall, I think it was about five or six years ago, the state put in place a framework for what the local governments can do in terms of regulation of that industry. But I think as different ordinances have been enacted at the local level, there are things that the industry is looking to see if they can go back to the state to limit the authority. And again, I think it's going to be some things, haven't seen any proposals specifically, but hearing that it may be things in the zoning area, number of occupants that you can have, length of stay, parking permitting, whether they have to have a business permit or business license. So definitely will be keeping an eye on that and working with my colleagues at both Benco and BML to address those issues. We have some existing language in the legislative program that really supports local authority on those short-term rental issues.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Because what you're saying is this industry seeks to go to the state to limit the authority of the local government to determine whether the existence of this kind of industry is feasible?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we typically see a lot of bills that will seek to limit local government's authority in many areas.
Who would, who would be there to protect the interests of local governments?
Well, you have folks like myself. You have representatives of the Virginia Association of Counties, Virginia municipally. There are a number of local governments around the state that have people like me that are in Richmond full-time during the legislative session. I think on this issue also, you're going to have support for, from the bricks and mortar folks because hotels and the lodging industry, they want to see this Airbnb type of industry treated more on equal footing with what they're having to comply with in terms of state and local regulations and taxation for that matter. So they typically on this issue have been on the local government side as well.
So you see the local government being tougher than what they want?
Yeah. I mean, I feel like that when we had, there was a big battle again five or six years ago. I felt like that, you know, we could have gone very far the other way in terms of the restrictions that local governments would have in their authority in this. And I felt like that at least the framework that was adopted at that time in five, six years in a technologically advancing world is not a very long period of time. Felt like that was a good framework that's, that was put in place and that local governments have been able to operate fairly successfully within that framework. So I'm hopeful that there are still, in addition to the lobbying effort that would be made, that there are folks that were present during that, during that time in the legislature that would be, continue to be friends to local governments and the bricks and mortar industry again. We've started talking about, you know, different legislators who, you know, were heading up the committees that were involved in the discussions and being able to have communications with them in advance in the legislative sessions and that, you know, they can, you know, at least make sure that this is on their radar and hopefully has as a priority to help us with this. But we really won't know until we start seeing the legislation or outlines of legislation as to what the specifics are. And I think once we see that, you know, it will certainly be, you know, a concerted effort to recruit that nation to work together to, you know, to try to make the bills go away or to make them so that they're much more workable for local governments.
Any other questions for David at this time?
I was going to mention, Mr. Chairman, just on the housing standpoint, the housing front. I think there's going to be some focus on housing affordability and affordable housing. And I think that's going to be a situation where there's probably going to be some initiatives that would be helpful to local governments and their ongoing efforts. And perhaps some legislation on the other side that will not be as helpful. That's all I really wanted to present to you as far as a legislative update and, you know, focusing on the legislative program and developing that. When you have it on the screen and it was in your packet, it was just a summary of the top three legislative priorities from this past General Assembly Session, really focusing on COVID recovery, the all-encompassing position that we had for a number of years on state budget, local revenue authority, opposition to unfunded mandates. And then, of course, your favorite topic, Mr. Chairman, the support from the state for broadband expansion. I will mention with regard to the budgets and the funding and to address, I guess, some of the recent EML. Traffic was a letter that came from Daco that they were sending to the governor in advance of him developing, in his team developing amendments to the state budget. A number of items that were priorities for the Association of Counties. You know, in reviewing that, you know, all of those items, I think, are addressed in the current program. And I'll certainly look at that in more detail to see if there's any tweaking that you can do in the legislative program that we currently have. And then also, I would mention, we do have another position outside of the priorities. I believe it's in the public safety section that addresses compensation of law enforcement officers. And I'm going to take a look at that position as it relates to some of the discussions you all have been having regarding to competition that's out there for salaries and having law enforcement officers be able to stay in the void in Nelson County and other rural areas. Would you like to take any suggestions, gentlemen, you have, with regard to the programs, priorities, any legislative positions that would answer any additional questions?
Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you for coming out and all the hard work you do for us in Richmond.
Hearing none. Appreciate you so much.
Excellent. And I, of course, would like to remind the board, if you ever do have any legislative questions, Mr. Blunt is the best talking point for us as a board. He can give you the ins and outs and does a great job for us up in the, up in the assembly. So, thank you, David. All right. Moving on to Ted. Reich, speak.
Uh, Reek.
Reek.
Thank you. Again, my name is Ted Reek. Thank you. Thanks for allowing us to be here today. I'll thank you on John. I want to recognize one of our board members from Nelson County, Diane McCallag. She's been a very strong proponent for transit in New York County. And also I want to recognize a couple of staff members, Donna Morris and Monde Needes. They actually run the place, so they're here to make sure I don't say anything wrong. I'm controllers, aren't I?
You are.
Is it this one I hear or that one? Ah, there we go. The purpose of John really is to provide people with independence and dignity and the ability to take control of their lives. We very much allow the individual to live their own lives the way they want to. And we provide that means in order to make that happen. And thanks to your investment, that makes it even more palatable. We have considerable resources at John to make this happen with a very dedicated staff of people who care passionately about the riders that we serve. Combined, our bus operators have over 500 years of experience. We cover a pretty wide range of surface areas as well as urban and rural terrain. The investment that Nelson County makes in transit pays back three to one. Every dollar you've invested in transit in John, creating $3 of service in return. That's because we're able to leverage federal and state resources in order to provide those additional services. We provide services mainly within the county on Mondays and Tuesdays. And we also provide services in Charlottesville on Monday through Friday to support the work trips. I'll think, and one more thing, most of our services provide social service-type access, which is vital to the health and wellbeing of many of your citizens. Again, our, our goal is to provide independent living for people, especially older individuals who want to age in place. We provide that opportunity to do that. We also give their caregivers an option to take care of their parents, for example. Without that, people wouldn't be able to work or access the services in goods of this county. And being able to provide this independence allows people to keep their health up. If we're not able to take people to medical appointments and such healthy, well, healthy outcomes, there might be more emergency transportation as a result. So we provide an outlet for that as well. We also enable people to afford their, their housing and their ability to live. There's a study out there that says that if the transportation costs of an individual with their housing exceeds 50% of their income, that makes it a very difficult decision. There are people who have to decide between paying the rent or putting food on the table. Services like John reuse that conundrum. It makes independent living that much more prudent. We do serve a number of work trips in the county, again, mainly to Charlottesville and Almarle County. For every dollar that person earns when they're working, turns over seven times in the county. That means we come back home and cash your paycheck and we go to the store to buy groceries. And that store and their employees earn money, which goes that back out in the community and turns that over. So us being able to provide more access is really an economic stimulus to the area. But we're not resting at John. We are looking to improve and move forward on our transportation programs. I can give you a couple of ideas about what we're doing. We're actually looking at alternative fuels as people are concerned about the environment. We're looking at, we're using John's carbon footprint. Most of our vehicles are gasoline-powered. We're looking at either electric vehicles, CNG, or hydrogen fuel cells. Furthermore, we are exploring something called microtransit. If you're familiar with Uber, it's an Uber version of transit where you can book your trip using a smartphone or calling in and allow you for spontaneous travel, which is how most people tend to travel these days. We are also embarking on a five-year transit development plan. We're trying to look at the future to see where John ought to be. We're looking at where transportation needs are most evident. This is the Skitz County region that we're serving. This is Nelson County. Darker blue indicates very high need for transit. A lot of the blue less than the need, as you can see around Livingston to the west and north, northwest, high, high needs for services in your county. Speaking about the older population, a similar distribution of older people where our services are bottoming even. And, okay, Amanda, thank you. And we are trying to promote our services. We're trying to recover some COVID. And you may have seen on some of our television, one of our 30 second spots. Here's one of them.
...introduced, since 1975, John's professional operators have offered compassionate and inclusive transportation for everyone. And in the past two years, we have delivered essential workers to their jobs, taken patients to critical healthcare appointments, shuttled voters to the polls, and helped you stay connected. We are grounded in service to our community. Where can John take you?
These commercials, we have two other versions of this commercial be playing on all the local stations and I'll be playing through spring of 2023. You may see that and hope to enjoy it. That's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions or comments? I'd be happy to take them.
Yeah. I understand that your funding is going down or for some reason, the kind of services you could provide for Nelson County is being somewhat diminished?
I'm not sure about that. We do rely upon the local contribution to match federal and state resources. So a lot depends upon the contribution of the county, which enables us to leverage more funding. I'm not aware that our state or federal funding is being reduced. So I'm not real sure about that.
Are you aware that any services delivered to Nelson County are being reduced?
I don't believe we can reduce services in Nelson County.
We need more services. That's running the issue. Part of the county that's not served is the southern part of the county, which in your map doesn't show a need, but like, could your buses go to parents' center, for instance, in the southern part of the county?
They can go anywhere in Nelson County. So I guess we can do that.
What determines if you're...
Well, I think it's a big, a big issue. We also look at demand. I showed you those maps earlier. We are studying what mandatory services are. If there's an interest in looking at more service in Nelson County, and Diane is a strong proponent of this, I would like to get together with stakeholders in the county to better determine what the needs are, where to go. I know we have, we only operate services within the county two days a week. Most places have five, six, even seven days a week. So even what you do have, it is limited, but it's kind of driven by the amount of funding that's available to us. And part of that's really kind of a local decision. If there is an appetite for more service, we can define what that can be. Have your input. Tell you what we think that's going to involve, what the cost might be. And if there's an interest in being able to do that, we'd be very happy to supply that.
What is the percentage of contribution of the local government?
Well, it's about a third of what it costs to actually operate the service. I think your share is around 70%.
67, 176.
67, 176.
How dare you not that, though?
I didn't want to sound too nerdy, but I did want to. Sorry, Candy.
I think our budget is going to... One thing that, you know, I've had these conversations. And first and foremost, I'm glad to see you here and hopefully the operations are in much good working order these days. So we're thankful and looking forward to a really great future. I know, you know, with the diminished services, that's, I can attest that in years past, you know, folks have had, had that experience of dramatic change. I can speak to probably four or five years ago, that was an instance that happened, where instead of going to the house, it was like a half a mile away from the house because of mileage. And keep in mind, there was, you know, some issues going on inside of the industry. Obviously, we can now see, you know, that result. But today, I've heard much more positive interactions relative to some years ago. And if we do need more services, I do suggest you have a meeting with them with some of your constituents, some constituent leaders who might be able to connect the dots. Because a lot of people don't know about John. There's a lot of folks who, you know, need to get access to healthcare and they don't know this is an opportunity for them. So maybe there's some opportunity that you could have at the Heritage Center to have that discussion. If there's further.
I believe that, Representative Reed, you've been involved in a discussion with Danny Harris, is it?
Correct. He, I was in touch with him two weeks ago and he said that, and Danny is the chairman of the senior senators. And he said that, that John was reducing the services on Mondays and Tuesdays.
Yeah, I don't know if that's really quite accurate. I mean, we have more than... I mean, we have more demand on those two days than we can handle. Now, we would like to talk to Mr. Harris about that. If there's an opportunity to shift the man to other days of the week or other geographic areas within the county, we might be able to provide services with our existing resources. But if there is an appetite for additional services, we might certainly present proposals to you all about that.
I guarantee there is.
Gotcha.
We need to kind of get to that and define what those are.
Okay, well, maybe we can get together really soon and talk that over.
I look forward to that. And you all should be getting a survey, if you haven't already. As part of our five-year transit plan, we're sending surveys out to stakeholders in all the counties asking about kinds of needs. So if you've seen that or it's in your spam folder, you might want to take a look at that. If you have an opportunity, please complete it and help our planning process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
This question might be beyond your ken of knowing, but, you know, opportunities for healthcare and jobs exist in Lynchburg, Madison Heights, and Amherst. Is there any service between... If there was a service, who would provide that service? Is there any... Is there a John that exists?
Well, we don't go outside our area and we certainly don't go to Lynchburg. But if there is demand for that, we'd certainly reach out to Lynchburg area. I don't know if they have the equivalent of a job there. We would certainly be open to those kinds of long-distance type trips. My wife, for example, treats cancer patients at UVA. And people would drive a couple of hours each way just to get treatment, which has got to be very difficult for the patient. So I think there is a need for long-distance medical type related trips. We just kind of get our arms around it and see what resources are out there. Is Lynchburg hearing the same thing? Can we have a partnership with them?
So what you're saying is John, Almarve County is an independent operation and it doesn't connect with anything other place in the state?
Well, we connect with six counties. We start up as Far North with Green, come down to Nelson and Buckingham.
That is the scope of your involvement.
Right now, but we would like to be able to look for longer distance type services. We're talking with people in Rockingham County, for example, who's looking to start new services up there.
What about the idea of some connection with Lynchburg?
We'll be hoping, I've not heard that until today. So that's something we can put on our to-do list to see what their interest is. So we need to get a list of ideas.
The person in the southern part of this county is 30 minutes at most from Lynchburg. And it's 50 minutes to Charlottesville.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know anything about the services there and what they have to offer. And we'd be happy to facilitate that discussion and see where things may be. They already have something, we just don't know about it.
All right, any other questions? You're done. Thank you guys so much. Moving on to our project partners.
I'm Mark Smith, the architectural partner of the senior architect, Pat Yellen. He's an architectural designer. We both worked on what we call the Ag complex. Appreciate that, Amanda. So we're here to give you just a brief overview of what's taken place over the last year or so and answer any questions you may have. So we're going to, you've got the report. The full report is yea thick. We boiled it down into, what, 15 slides? So we're going to breeze through it fairly quick. And any questions that you may have or any follow-up questions, we'd be glad to be able to answer those for you. So we'll just be calling the Ag Center for all intents and purposes. We were lucky enough to have a basis of design, which was from the Old Dominion Ag Center, which is located right there in Chatham, near Dampel. And that was what was given to us as being pretty much the program. Program meaning all the bits and pieces that Amherst County and Nelson County had come up with. And I think it was mainly an Amherst County derivative because we got a PowerPoint presentation from them that included some detailed information. Pat took and put all that together. We actually have drawings of the Ag Center and of Old Dominion. And so we used that along with some other data to come up with the program. We refined the programming and taken and getting even construction estimates for it. So that's kind of the basis of it. And we're prepared to have a go-through some of the programming pieces for you. The site on the left is the site of Amherst. And the site on the right, in the same scale, is Old Dominion. So two different sizes of sites, greatly different. But as far as the parts to it, a lot of what you see at the Old Dominion is almost a copy of what was proposed or is proposed at the Amherst-Nelson Ag Site. The perspective there is one that Pat put together based on our programming and relatively simple architecture, nothing over the top. A lot of pre-engineered buildings, wall systems or either masonry block or eatlets. So nothing, you know, exotic. Pat, do you want to go through some of the programming pieces?
So what Amherst came to us with as far as mission would be to support local farmers in your two counties to provide career and technical education for the residents and to have some revenue generation as well. So with all that in mind, we developed this program and it's quite a lot of different types of spaces. So right now, we're looking at interior spaces. So these will be under a roof. So this main building all encompasses an arena, conference rooms, large conference rooms that you can have meetings or events in, classrooms for training or education, offices for anyone who's working there. And then also in this, we'll skip down. There's a kitchen, a cannery, meat processing. All that is in this one building here. And if you go back to this, our basis of design, that building right there is pretty much what we're talking about right now. So everything after this is new, using the whole site.
About 100 houses per feet.
Right. Yeah, so additionally, the program asked for a farmer's market to kind of bring the community together. Cattle working building for education or training for local farmers to come. Training areas for CDL certification and farm equipment. Warehouses to support the farmer's market. A greenhouse for environmental education. Horse stalls for similar reasons, for local farmers. And then another campsite with cabins. And that's more of the revenue generation to encourage families to come and spend a weekend camping. And now we'll move into exterior spaces. These include mostly education and supporting local farmers type spaces. So you have a large environmental education area, the equestrian center, fairgrounds for large events that can also support RV parking, equipment training again for CDL certification, livestock paddocks, camping campsites along with cabins. So we'll have a big, we proposed a 10-acre campsite so you could have a nice sprawling space. A two-and-a-half mile riding trail, or take ATVs out, take horses on. And then solar compost, viticulture. All that's more environmental education and then again, RV sites.
And the site that you saw, of course, is a 300-acre site versus, of course, the Old Dominion.
I think 20.
20. So, you know, some of these big areas, such as the fairgrounds, that's about 16-acre piece of grading top right there. So some pretty big flat areas that are needing to be carved out of this rolling hill type of site that you've got. So it's not a one-for-one type of project. It was just a basis of design to start with. So getting into the site a little bit. Y'all can ask questions as we go along? Is that okay? So y'all just spark out questions if you have as we go along. Let's see here. How's this pointer work?
Oh, point to point?
Yeah.
Get a razor button off. There's a red button at the top there.
Red button? You can see any red button. I see an on/off button. Oh, this little red button. That? I didn't want to turn it on. So this is the entrance right here. And this really plays into a location that Hurt and Profit, who is consulting to us, determined with BDOT guidance that that's about the only place you can get the entrance into. And the site is a lot of rolling hills, a lot of open pastures, which encompasses mainly this southern half of the site. Up here where the campground is, we put that up there on a hill. And it's some streams, there's some, a lot of trees, putting in a new pond. But the big, big flat areas are down here on the southern end. You know, the handling of outdoor spaces here and here with this being the fairgrounds, which is about 16 acres, the camping going on here. And then the actual Ag Center proper being like right in this area here. So, you know, these small buildings are fairly easy to pop in there. But these large areas are going to require quite a bit of grading. And Hurt and Profit did an evaluation of the amount of grading and put that into the estimate as well. So there's been a lot of thought, even though this is a preliminary feasibility study, there's been a lot of thought and a lot of pre-engineering already that's taken place to come up with the estimate. Just to be clear, we were asked to include an alternate for the cowboy RV camping area, which is a space right here next to the fairground. That is yours.
Okay, yeah, we talked a little bit about this. This is our main agricultural complex with the large arena. That's going to be a great event space. In the red, you see the large conference space that can also be used for event space. And then everything else is community support, education. You can, you know, the kitchen can be used for events, but can also be used for education. The meat processing and cannery, same thing. And then classrooms and offices. And again, this is basically the Old Dominion Ag Center, just a little bit tweaked.
And to the cost now, this is just a breakdown snapshot. We've got supporting data for all of these. We need to just round out some numbers. But as you can see, the site cost is pretty close to half of the project cost. And we did, we did, you know, we put land at 1.2 billion. And that was based on some public data that was out there. I think the land was assessed at maybe 900,000, something like that. And so we figured market value would be more than that. And we just dropped a 1.2 in there. And, you know, the site preparation is all the grading and there is quite a bit of it. Rough grading, final grading, roadways, onsite improvements of the finishing up of the site, utility and infrastructure, a lot of piping, electrical, storm, fire protection is a storage tank, fire pump, et cetera. Because all the, most of these buildings are considered buildings that would require fire protection, sprinkler systems, and then landscaping. So about a $28 billion site project. The structures, we broke those down into individual structures. And if you have questions about how we came up with those numbers, those are broken down into smaller bits in one, into a packet of the report. But again, we were using pretty much pre-engineered metal buildings. Nothing real crazy. We've got some masonry block that would be required for some of the abuse areas, et cetera. The cabins, more residential design, what you would maybe see at a state park, which we've done some of the state park cabins. And we know what the cost of state park cabins are, so we dropped those in. And then we put the alternate in there for the camping at the fairgrounds for, as we say, a $54 million project. These are the breakdowns that you can see that are even more broken down in your report packet. But if there were any questions about that, what's on the right-hand side is all the architectural mainly. Whereas this is more of the engineer's data over here on the left side. And Hurt and Profit put their numbers together using their modeling software. And we use historical data and also some contractor pricing on our data, which is broken down here, which also breaks down the programming as to which buildings have fire sprinklers, which ones are just heated and ventilated, or which ones are air-conditioned and heated. So this line over here will tell you, you know, what's inside the building for mechanical systems and whether it has to be sprinkled, fire sprinkled. Again, more cost analysis. I know that water on the site was a big question mark. It's a preliminary study, so we didn't have going out and drilling wells to test to see how many gallons per minute we could get. But we did go and get, I think it was maybe, well, I'll say, probably not 100% sure, but it's well drilling that does work in this county, in this area, that Hurt and Profit went and talked to and said, what do you think? You know, if you were that man, would we get that here? And they told us that, yes, you would probably get water here. You've already got two wells already. There's one that was at the old house that's up on, that was up on the old. And then there's another well that's down in the southwest part of the site. And so you need, you need quite a bit of water, but we've got a holding tank as well. You need 27,000 gallons per day to serve the whole site. And we're thinking that probably about three wells would probably do it. Now, we did give a proposal to go out and drill some test wells and to test the wells that are already there because they're decommissioned as far as we know. So we don't know the quality of them. We don't know the gallons per minute or hour or day. So that would have to be taking place. And that's one of our recommendations that we made before you would put a tendency on the land. That's a recommendation. put a, um, a tendency on the land before you purchase it. That's a recommendation. These are just some of the, the land features on the site. It's a beautiful site. Um, walked in, and it's, um, some old structures there. Um, we've tried to stay away from destroying the whole site, trying to work around some of the existing structures. Um, you know, the, the pond we've left, um, the barn, some of the barns we left, and trying to stay together with, um, you know, some of the historic pieces that are on the site. There's an old silo base, which is basically a chunk of concrete, but, um, pretty interesting, and we'd like to keep that integrated into the plan. Um, you do have a cell tower up in the mid part on the eastern side of the site. Uh, what you see down here is the well, um, pump house, pump that's at the old house. Uh, this was just a watering trough, and then this is the, uh, the well that's down the southwest corner. The entrance into the site, like I said, is very limited, as I showed you on the, uh, on the site plan that we had. But this is about the only entrance that, um, you can get, just mainly because of sight lines. And, uh, there's a cell tower up there. If you count oriented, this is the existing entrance. This is the old home place, farm, uh, house that was up there, which was demolished. That's the pond right there, and then off the site, it, that's the beginning of the wooded area and the camp area that we've got up the hill, uh, with fairgrounds being over here. So high visibility along 29 coming along here. All your heavy duty, uh, big stuff is, is right along 29, the fairgrounds, the outdoor spaces, with further up the hill being the, um, apparently commanding view would be the, uh, complex proper. Just basically some elevations. Pat put these together for our estimating purposes and also just for the sake of submitting for the, um, the report. Again, mostly pre-engineered buildings. Uh, this is a cabin right here, which would be made out of hardwood, wood shingles and things like that, would tuck, tuck up into that wooded section pretty well. Put in a few little architectural, um, designs that stick out from the pre-engineered building for the farmer's market. So that kind of concludes our presentation. Anything, you know, left out of that? Great? Sound good? So try to stay within 15 minutes. Hopefully that sucked 15 minutes.
All right. Any questions?
All good.
All right.
Okay. Thank you for allowing us to present.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, y'all. Set that up.
Okay. Moving on to new and unfinished business. Uh, change November regular board supervisor meeting. Mr. Barton had brought staff aware about a conflict with the suggested date. We need to pick a different one, right, Mr. Barton?
That's correct.
I was, had a brief conversation with Amanda, uh, before the meeting started. How does November 7th look for everyone?
Day before election day, is that Monday?
Nah, November 7th is the...
It is the election day.
Nah, election day is the first.
No, the eighth.
Is it a date? Why does my phone say first?
It's wrong.
You got this wrong. Well, guys, I am now busy. All right. So how's the 7th sound?
Love it.
Everybody got any issues with that?
Me.
Is that Monday?
Mr. Reed made a noise.
Still trying to get there. Looks good.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we amend the regular board supervisor meeting to November 7th. Need a motion.
So move.
Motion, Mr. Barton, or a second?
I'll say it.
Second for Mr. Reed. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion will do vote by acclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, abstentions? All right, let the record reflect. Unanimous vote in reference to November 7th at our regular times. Moving on to safe streets and roads for all grant program. Christine, Sandy, have you been here before?
Not, um, not this capacity, but...
I got you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. And for those of you who I haven't met, my name is Sandy Schalkford. I'm the Director of Planning and Transportation for the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. I actually am also Nelson County resident in the St. Harvey District. So it's good to be back in, in front of you all tonight. So I'm going to talk to you all tonight about the Safe Streets and Roads for All discretionary grant program. Um, there's some information in your packets, but just to, um, give a little bit of background information, um, this was a grant program that was established in the bipartisan infrastructure law, and it allocates between five and six billion dollars in funding over the next five years. So approximately a billion dollars annually for the next, um, for the next, uh, five years. And it has a stated goal of preventing or significantly reducing roadway deaths and, um, serious injuries. There are two types of grants that are eligible for funding through this program. The first one is a planning grant to develop a comprehensive safety action plan. And then the second type of grant, um, program is for implementation of strategies or components that are identified in qualifying safety action plans. In order to be eligible for implementation funding, though, um, localities or regions must first have a qualified safety action plan in place. Um, based on the grant guidelines, there are eight components that are required in order for the, uh, safety action plan to conform to the eligibility requirements. So those include a leadership commitment from a governing body such as yourselves to, um, to, to a stated goal of reducing and setting targets for reducing and eliminating, uh, roadway deaths and serious injuries. There has to be an establishment of an oversight group to develop, implement, and monitor the plan. Um, there has to be a comprehensive approach to safety data collection and analysis. So this, um, component is actually one that we are working with, uh, VDOT to do regardless of, um, whether we are successful in, uh, securing this grant or not, because we think this is going to be really helpful. So starting in, um, January, we're going to be working with data to start this data collection and analysis. That will, um, support the ongoing expertise of the grant as we are successful in securing, um, a grant award. Um, the plan has to be developed using robust public and stakeholder engagement, has to include a representative process in the plan development to making sure that we are considering issues of equity and diversity and how the, um, strategies that are identified and prioritized with impact disadvantage to members of the community. Has to include an evaluation of processes and policies, so we're not just looking at infrastructure improvements, although that's certainly one important component of it, but also looking at other, um, types of, of, uh, strategies that would support, um, safe outcomes regardless of infrastructure or beyond just infrastructure. Um, we'll have to identify and prioritize projects as part of this, uh, comprehensive safety action plan. And then there has to be ongoing monitoring and reporting, um, to help understand what the impacts and, and effects of the safety action plan are moving forward. So, um, one important thing to, uh, to commend is that nobody in our region has a comprehensive safety action plan in place yet. So we are doing this as a multi-jurisdictional application for anyone who is interested in participating. Um, so, so we'll go through and, um, talk about what it looks like for a regional process, but we will be doing this for any of our member jurisdictions in the region that forehave already committed. Um, the benefits of having a comprehensive safety action plan in place is first of all, we're going to have a better understanding of, um, what, where our crash locations are and what the contributing factors to those crashes are. So looking beyond, um, single or individual locations, we're really looking at what is contributing to crashes over the board and identifying some of those recurring and systemic issues that maybe are going to be apparent. So it's a little bit of a different approach. Mr. Youngblood was here earlier talking about the 151 corridor study, and that is one way that we identify, have to make safety improvements, looking at specific corridors or locations. So this is taking a step back, looking at our entire system as a whole and understanding, um, beyond just looking at one individual location, are there certain things that, uh, crash hotspots have in common? What are those contributing factors? And that will help us better understand, um, what our opportunities are to, um, potentially, uh, make, make improvements beyond, um, that, that are not just site specific. They consider safety for all users, so we're looking at roadway, we're looking at vehicle safety, but we're also looking at bike path safety as well, safety for transit users. And I also did not include this, but it also considers safety on all roadways regardless of ownership. So this, um, so, so implementation funding could be available for improvement on privately maintained road systems as well if there's cooperation, um, from the owners of the injuries. Um, there will be, there will be an opportunity to build substantive relationships among stakeholders. So by having a regional approach to the safety action plan, we are going to be able to engage regional and state partners, um, at, at a deeper level than maybe we would be able to do if this was, uh, more of a locality driven, uh, project. So we'll be working with our state agencies like the, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Health. We'll be working, um, with, with a variety of, um, departments in the local jurisdictions. So not just the planning staff, but, um, but local law enforcement, um, state police, uh, first responders, really trying to make sure that the stakeholder engagement includes everyone who potentially has an opportunity to impact safety or has feedback that would be helpful to understand what is contributing to, um, unsafe conditions on our, on our road systems. Um, we're also going to be developing multifaceted strategies to reduce or eliminate roadway safety. So like I said earlier, we're talking about infrastructure improvements being one way that we're going to do this, but this goes beyond identifying just opportunities for infrastructure improvements. Also looking at maybe there are some strategies that are lower cost in nature that don't require, um, significant investments into capital. So things like, um, things like enforcement strategies, reviewing, uh, processes and policies, um, you know, as, as you all are going through a comprehensive plan and potentially looking at your zoning ordinance, there might be some things related to how, um, projects are reviewed or opportunities to work with developers that could be considered as strategies that could also be identified, um, as well as, uh, public information and communication with the, with the greater public. So, so really trying to approach this from a variety of perspectives and not just, um, identify where are the opportunities for infrastructure improvements. And then as Mr. Youngblood also talks about, um, another opportunity here is that it's going to help you all be aware of what projects, um, might be in the pipeline for, um, applications through a variety of funding mechanisms, not just the additional, um, implementation funding through Safe Streets and Roads for All, but it could potentially also, um, help you identify projects that might be more appropriate for transportation alternatives, revenue sharing, highway safety improvement program funding as well. Um, so it helps you all build your capacity to take advantage of these funding opportunities as they become available. Um, as I mentioned, we are going to be submitting as the Thomas Jefferson Planning District a multi-jurisdictional application. Um, so we have four localities that have already committed to participating in this application. We're here with you tonight and will be with Green County a little bit later today to also, um, determine their interest in participating as well. Um, we will, as the TJPDC, we will prepare the application and submit the, and submit the application. And you all, if you choose to participate, would benefit, um, because the TJPDC would bear the administrative, um, responsibility for making sure that we know the federal grant requirements and coordinate the project to make sure that we complete the project within our 24 month period of performance. There'll be a regional approach to the data collection and analysis, as I mentioned earlier, that will be supported by VDOT and will also help us identify, uh, larger trends. So, so we'll have a bigger, um, sample of information to help us, uh, identify trends over a larger, um, amount of information. There'll be cross jurisdictional information sharing, so all the jurisdictions will be going through this together, be able to learn from each other, bounce ideas off of each other, sort of see what's been working from different localities. Um, we'll have substantive engagement with our state and regional partners. The Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission will support the ongoing monitoring and reporting functions, and we will plan to do that as part of our existing program funding, um, outside of funding that's requested from this grant. And then you all will also benefit because while we're doing a lot of this on a regional basis, you're going to come away with it with a, um, safety action plan that is specific for Nelson County. So we would, um, make sure that there's engagement that's targeted specifically in Nelson County, work with you all to make sure that we are prioritizing the strategies and the needs and the goals specific to what you all need locally. So what I need from you tonight is, uh, first of all, if you look at your calendars, today is September 13th, and my grant application is due September 15th. So we do need, we do need a determination tonight on your interest in participating. It's, so this is an 80/20 grant, so it's 80% federal funding with a 20% local non-federal match that is required. Um, we're pretty close to our final scope of work with our consultants. So we know that Nelson County's portion would not exceed $30,000 if you all would like to participate. And, uh, and that we really, I'm happy to ask for any questions, but we would need actions for you all tonight on determining your interest in participating and a commitment for a local match not to exceed $30,000. Questions?
Yes. Any questions for Sandy at this time?
Yeah. All right. The $30,000, is that a contribution or the total amount that we get anticipated?
Yeah. So the, um, the, the final, the final grant's amount, I think, um, you know, we're going back and forth, checking just a few details. I think it's going to be 1.1 million dollars or just under 1.1 million dollars.
For the county.
Yeah, for, for the region as a whole. Nelson County, Nelson County would receive a specific safety action plan, but that would be the total amount for all of the jurisdictions in our region to participate in this. Nelson County's share, what they would be contributing to that would be $30,000, and you would get the public engagement specific to Nelson County, you would get a specific safety action plan. I think we had, I apologize, I left my notes, um, at the office, but, or in the car, but, um, you'd get either four or eight, uh, public sort of pop-up meetings, which are times when we would go into the Nelson County community specifically to do events. You would get public meetings from this. So there would be a lot of really intentional efforts specific to each locality.
Anyone else? Um, I, Seth, yes?
Um, I just want to note that, um, Sandy did provide a letter of support, a grant letter of support, um, in the package. So the board would just be asked to, if you were in support of participating in this grant program, to authorize, um, Maida County Administrator to submit a letter of support as drafted for this grant program, um, application, including the commitment of the local manager for not to exceed 30,000. That would be the action request, please.
All right. I have no problems with it. Anybody have any issues with it? Do we get a motion to, uh, approve as presented?
Uh, I'll, I'll move that, uh, we authorize, uh, Ms. McGary to sign the letter to, uh, Christine Jacobs, TJPDC Executive Director, um, to reflect our commitment to the safe streets and roads for all discretionary grant program.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Barton. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion will do vote by acclamation. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any abstentions, objections, hesitations from Mr. Barton? Uh, let the record show this is unanimous.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you so much, Sandy. Nice to see you. Moving on to emergency services council, interest-free loan. Livingston needs a truck. Right, Candy?
Yes.
Is Danny not here? David, do you know anything about it?
I mean, I do, David.
It's just a used truck.
It's an old truck that they got to replace in 1995.
So you have here a package request from the Nelson County Emergency Services Council. They submitted a letter that they had approved an emergency loan request unanimously for Livingston Volvo Fire Department in the amount of $40,000, uh, which was approved at their August 16th meeting. Uh, they want to use the money to purchase a 2005 HMB fire engine. They do have a current loan from the interest-free loan account and ask that this emergency request be added to the approximate 47,000 of the current loan. So they would have a total loan of 87,000. Um, they're requesting this due to the poor mechanical condition of the current 1995 engine that they must replace. Um, they submitted financials, um, some details, a few details on the truck. I guess it would be an eight-year, um, interest-free loan on the 40,000. Um, they're replacing a 95 engine... They're replacing a 95 engine in poor condition, and they would plan to sell that for a salvage The 95 engine needs major repairs and they couldn't justify the cost due to the age of that unit. And they would make this resource available countywide. And I will add that our EMS loan fund has a current available balance of $646,786.
I think they need it.
What's the recommendation?
It sounds like a reasonable request to me, so I would.
Let's do it.
Now, we have intent from the beginning of not buying used trucks. You know, it's hard to improve your fleet buying used trucks. Just think, we'll look at it more and see what, what dog kind of desire and what it's based on.
They did state in their request that it wasn't an emergency request just due to the poor mechanical condition of the 95 engine, so I think they're in a little bit of a bind and need to do something immediately.
Which is why I think they're looking at doing this and adding on to the existing loan rather than just waiting for their turn and rotation for a new truck. They're just trying to get through and have this as an emergency fix to a problem that they've got. And I know it was approved unanimously at the Emergency Services Council meeting.
I'm not sure about the status of ordering or receiving fire trucks right now, but I know with the ambulances, those are having really long lead times and we're having trouble getting those timely.
It's same with fire trucks. It's a, a lot of it is of getting the chassis three, two, three years out.
Holy crap. Well, it's my suggestion that we give them this emergency loan. It's a good step. We could, hopefully at the next council meeting, Mr. Par, you can bring up the interest in always having a newer fleet.
Yeah, I'm moved. Go ahead, sorry.
Are, are we aware that this 2005 engine is available and from whom?
It's edited in the thing.
I think it's in the house.
2005, I didn't say where, but I imagine they wouldn't have specified '05.
I don't know where it is right now, but it's one, they've gone, they've looked at it, they've had people test drive it and check it out.
Okay, so they got.
Yes, yeah, they've, they've been there.
Yeah, sure wish we had someone here.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I know they've sent a couple of members from the department up there to look at it.
Okay.
Got there, see a little proof.
Okay. All right, we have a motion for Mr. Par?
Yes.
We have a second.
I say it.
Second for Mr. Par, any discussion? Since this is pretty high down, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Um.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes. Okay, moving on to proposed amendments, K-9 at large. Kevin, you're here. Nice to see you, sir.
I'm guessing you guys, everybody has the proposal, everybody reviewed that.
Who are you?
I'm also right, Nelson County Animal Control.
I'm good, man. Number one met you.
Maybe a couple times. So today we're talking about a situation where, um, obviously we had voted on this ordinance a couple of years ago, put it in place, wanted to see how it went, and obviously we still have repeat offenders who are not correcting their animals and their situation. And so that's why we're here today, is to discuss mechanisms going forward about how we can put some teeth to this so that these bad players can feel a little pain. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Par?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Just with being in place for as long as this has been, we've kind of been in the field and worked with this thing to work, and what we run into, again, I'm hoping you guys have a copy of my provision here, but what I'm looking for is kind of streamline this thing to eliminate some of the pitfalls we keep having in the courtroom. Out of, I think I've got my numbers right here, and I think it's on yours as well, but it looks like 111, what I originally submitted is 111 warning for written, and out of those 21 civil penalties, the strike two was issued, and again, out of those 21 out of that 111, they were in violation for a number of days. And that kind of shows you the numbers of out of the 111 out of the 21, a lot of that was when this thing initially got put to work. So you had people that were unaware of it, and then once they were advised of it, it just, the numbers just dropped. So when we got to the strike two, 21 out of that 111 is what we were looking at. From there, again, when this was written, the strike, there were five strike threes issued, which is the Class 1 misdemeanor. And only three of those had been caught.
How's the judge treated it?
Well, the problem we're running into, again, was the written warning part of it. There was confusion in who gets the written warning, and also is a written warning to be issued to that person for each dog they did. So it was so many options that we were running into that was putting us back doing do-overs over and over again, it was just really messy. The judge started immediately doing advisement hearings on the strike two. So anybody that was charged with the civil penalty was immediately brought in the following week for an advisement hearing with the potential that they were going to be a strike three offender. So they're holding advisements anyway, but again, once, it, it just got really messy with the loopholes and stuff that they were finding. So what, what I've done, just from talking with Phil, other localities, and with our own prosecutors here, is like, just what we need best is to simplify this thing. And clearly to me, it's a no-brainer. The Class 1 misdemeanor packs the punch to shut this thing down, because out of all that 111, you got five that show you that it's effective, and that's what it takes to get people to get compliant. The, the reason why all these other, all the other 21 that got the strike twos, they surrendered their dogs to avoid the Class 1 misdemeanor. So it sounds like, and it looks like to me this thing is promoting responsible pet ownership. It's, it's eliminating these problems in the community that these people are facing. And I don't know of anybody, and y'all can tell me differently, if y'all feel differently or have heard something, but I don't know of any negative complaints or anything that's come in. We definitely haven't dealt with any hunters, so this thing was, and haven't had any reason to. They've all been compliant with everything, that's been quiet. You know, our basic general law abiding citizens are okay with this, and we've approached it as I wrote it here that, you know, we're trying to preserve the dynamic in these neighborhoods. So if, you know, I happen somewhere, if there's a little neighborhood where dogs still running loose, but everybody's okay with it, we're okay with it. We're not going in trying to pick up every dog at large, but as soon as a call comes in for service or somebody's complaining about something, of course, we go in at that point, we got to kind of figure that out. But the problem with that is, as soon as, as soon as that happens, one person reports to another person, everybody starts reporting each other at that point. So it just turns, we got to go in and clean that mess up for a while, but again, I feel like what Phil has revised for everybody here is to go through the thing. You know, there's, there's not been a use of any kind with this, believe me. Our, our goal is measured what we consider a success, and the deal not here in court one, so we're going to do everything we can to continue to resolve this stuff. And, and you know, not to mention, as y'all consider, you know, approving this, you know, there's checks and balances, you know, in the courts. I mean, Joe Ferguson is not going to let us just bring some, you know, Miss Johnson who's chihuahua out, out because her little collar battery went dead, and we ride her up on a Class 1 misdemeanor just abusing our power. I mean, it's just not going to fly in this court, it's just not. So I, I think we're on to something here, and I believe, I think it needs to be considered and be appreciated if y'all could see the same.
Now, to remind the board that this particular action, we will not be voting on it necessarily, we will be sending it to a public hearing. And is that a 30-day notice, so this will be at a regular October meeting?
I believe in ordinance amendments, it would be two notices a week apart, so I think it would, should be time for October.
Okay, October, worst case November. And again, you know, we're sending this to a public hearing, so this allows Canadian Board if anybody has any comments. I think this is an important issue as it relates to, you know, how we can enforce this. We got some folks who are dealing with repetitive situations with their canines. Now, is this also farm, or is that separate?
Oh, well.
I wasn't sure if we were going to relate this as farm animals as well.
Well, it's definitely a separate deal, and really what needs to happen with that is I need to go ahead and pull that state, a copy of the state code and send that to Phil and make a proposal on that one, consider that for you guys, and that way Phil can draft something based on that state. I don't want that on that one.
Okay, so that is in the process?
Yes, sir.
Great, okay.
Just a question. So the law we passed a couple of years ago has significantly made, in your opinion, a good thing, less people runners are being abused, and, and you haven't had any headaches about people, people who are facing it.
I think the bulk of the people that, you know, I think everybody had perception of how this thing was going to go at first, and that this place was full of people opposing the whole thing because they thought we were going to try to change your way of life, but I think once everybody went back home, they found out that it wasn't going to be as bad as they thought. What I'm finding, and I hope I answered your question, Mr. Par, but it's, if you look at those five people, you look at who they are, I mean, we got a lot more going on with those five people than just canines at large. The rest of our community is, everybody's just doing their thing and everything we're working out like they're just fine. We've, we've got dogs that, I mean, we are, I mean, we're still using officers discretion outside. We, we're still picking dogs up and, you know, things just happen, you know, these batteries do go dead, you know, dogs, you know, do get out there, things happen, and we're back in all those things. And these five people that I just brought up are a very special kind of five people in our community. They got a whole lot bigger fish to fry than a Class 1 misdemeanor.
They consistent.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah, so you, you think your recommendation will make your life easier and be real about different to a regular person?
Yes, sir, and I think there are appropriate times where, just jumping right to it is appropriate, I really do, there's certain situations where, like, well, for instance, my officer being attacked this week, we got a canine at large, and well, I take that back, there could be a legitimate reason that dog could be out, and, and we would look into that, we're in custody of that dog right now, but it was at large, it attacked Officer Brian over last week, while she was picking it up as a stray, but, you know, it's going to have to be a really good reason.
But you haven't had large numbers of people complaining about their dogs being picked up?
No, sir.
I've, I've had plenty of people complain about the repeat offended dogs though.
Yeah.
All right, let's get a motion.
Move that we approve Resolution R 202256 for a public hearing regarding Chapter 3 Animals, Article 2 Dogs and Cats, Dogs Running at Large.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Reed, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Hargan?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes. Okay, moving on to reports, thank you, Kevin. County Ministers' Report. Candy, I got your packet, and I was like, oh my God, what's that? Stack it all in there.
All right, good afternoon. I'll start with the usual customary COVID-19 update. Current VDA's data from Nelson County is of September 9th, reflects two new cases reported in the last 13 weeks, and we have a seven-day average of new daily cases reported of two. To date, the county has had 3,020 cases of the virus and 38 deaths. For the TDC, Nelson County's community risk level remains at medium, which means if you're at high risk for severe illness, talk to your healthcare provider about whether you need to wear a mask and take up precautions, and stay up to date on COVID-19 vaccines, and thirdly, get tested if you have symptoms. Next, I will report on the FEMA flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map update. Staff participated in a webinar regarding the FEMA's flood insurance study and the updating of the flood insurance rate maps for the county. Once the preliminary firm and FIS reports were released, the firm maps will be available for downloading and viewing on FEMA's website. County will also receive hard copies of these reports, so there will be a comment period prior to final, finalization of these. More specific information regarding the county's data and accessing it will be provided as it is received. I did receive an email with some information on this earlier today, which I forwarded on to the board. As far as the comprehensive plan, our project website, as you know, is www.nelson2022.com. Public input survey deadline was extended to August 31st, 22, and the IDA wall and youth art challenge remains active online. Public engagement workshops were held at various locations in the county on July 13th and 20th, August 3rd and August 28th, with valuable participation provided by all who attended. Next public participation opportunity will be a public input results forum to be held on October 2nd, 2022. Four joint work sessions of the Board Supervisors and Planning Commission will follow on October 25th, January 18th of 23, March 15th of 23, and May 17th of 23. And all of this information is posted on that website. Closing on the Larkin Park repurchase and bond financing of approximately 300 acres adjoining the north and south sides of the Nelsonville High School complex occurred on August 12th. I'd like to express appreciation to the Nelson County EDA, Mr. Payne County Attorney, Amanda Spivey and Julie Allen DeGadre, County staff, Sands Anderson, our Bond Counsel, and Davenport and Company, our financial advisors, and working tirelessly to finalize these transactions. In relation to that, on September 7th, a Board Supervisors work session was held to discuss next steps in planning for the use of Larkin property. Discussion was facilitated by architectural partners and included the Board, County staff, from County Administration, Parks and Recreation, Economic Development and Finance, and School Division staff, including the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and a school board member. The subcommittee was designated to assess countywide recreation assets, including community centers. A public input survey and research on YMCA and our Boys and Girls Club facility operations was commissioned, with results to be shared at another work session to be scheduled in November. At that time, the aggregated, yes, aggregated public input from the comprehensive plan will be known and also can be considered. PMA Architecture is our architecture firm working on the new office building for social services and building inspections, planning, and zoning. They're working on finalizing the initial conceptual package to be shared with the project team in early October. I believe that date has been established as October 4th now, from 2 to 4. They've concluded the space needs assessments for the departments and have moved forward in developing the conceptual site analysis, which includes suggested locations for the new building, the footprint, parking surfaces, and roads requiring access to site. The TJPDC Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy SEZ Grant, we were informed on August 30th, 22, that PDC was awarded an $80,000 ARP U.S. Economic Development SEZ Grant, which requires a $20,000 which requires a $20,000 local match from all of the participants for a total of $100,000. The Board committed the county share of about $1,100 back in February of '22, which is being paid out of FY '23 budgeted funds. The grant process will engage public, private, and nonprofit sector partners to establish a strategic blueprint for regional economic collaboration and capacity building to guide economic prosperity and resilience for the region. The award letter was emailed to the Board on September 12th. The county received official notification from the Commonwealth Department of Transportation that the historic Gladstone Depot project has been awarded a Transportation Alternatives funding grant for FY '23, '24 in the amount of $586,966. The county has not yet received a project administration agreement, at which time the Board, if the Board authorizes execution of the agreement, the county will have to commit to providing a 20% local match of approximately $147,000. Friends of Gladstone have commissioned an appraisal of the depot structure to assess its value in order to potentially use that for in-kind match, with those results pending. They are tentatively scheduled to come before the Board at the October regular meeting to discuss the project and its funding. We did provide the letter of awards to the Board by email yesterday on the 12th. Our short-term rentals, which is a hot topic in a lot of localities in our region, we contacted the Virginia Institute of Government to request an inquiry to be sent to other localities statewide, asking about their regulation of short-term rentals and their use of any tracking software or online subscription databases and their usefulness. We will share this information once that's received. Supervisors Reed and Rutherford are conducting meetings for short-term rental community members prior to establishing and completing the overall work group on the subject. Next, we received the 2022 MAP to Health Report, which was forwarded to the Board by email on September 9th. The Blue Ridge Health District released the 2022 MAP to Health Report on its website as of September 2nd. National Association of County and City Health officials has implemented a community-driven strategic planning process for improving community health called Mobilization for Action Through Planning and Partnership, or MAP, M-A-P-P. This framework, known locally as MAP to Health, includes engaging community partners in the collection and review of qualitative and quantitative data from trusted local and national sources. And doing so, participating partners can clearly define the conditions that support or obstruct wellness and identify resources to address obstacles. This joint MAP to Health Report was completed in collaboration with Blue Ridge Health District, EVA Health, Centerra Martin-Jefferson Hospital, and Centerra Martin-Jefferson Outpatient Surgery Center, which has the identical service areas of the city of Charlottesville, Albemarle, Savannah, Green, Louisa, Nelson Counties. We, as noted, I sent the report to the Board on 9/9, and we can schedule a report presentation with your question to the Board. Lastly, there's no new information to report on the Renaissance Ridge housing development. And I believe you all received all the other staff reports with your packet or in a separate email. That's all I have to report today.
All right, any questions for Candy at this time? Here now. Thank you, Candy. Moving on to Board reports. I have a couple reports which will turn into directives. So don't let me forget. One is School Board likes to schedule a joint meeting. Amherst has inquired about having a joint meeting. And there's something else I said, short-term rentals. I need to make sure I get to those. Some of those, most all of those are pretty much directives, so I'll probably save most of my stuff for then. All right, we'll start with Mr. Reed.
Okay, thank you. On Sunday, August 14th, I attended the rededication of the Margaret C. Henderson gym at the Herdman Center. And it was incredibly well-attended. And so grateful that the Hendersons started the initiative. And I believe they've raised over $400,000 for that. And I believe it may be up and running as we speak. So I'm very grateful that having the gym back in the county at full force. On August 18th, Mr. Rutherford and I, and also Mr. Blount, who was here earlier, attended the Virginia Association of Counties County Official Summit. That was in Roanoke. I served or attended the Education Steering Committee meeting and also the Environment and Agriculture Steering Committee and the Climate Steering Committee. These steering committees work on the legislative programs in terms of talking points to make sure that they bring to Richmond on behalf of the counties that it serves. And we'll have a chance to weigh in on those things when we're there. And there were some specifics that went on, but probably nothing I need to bring up now. I attended the Comprehensive Plan Workshop on the 28th. And mid-week last, I attended a meeting, a public meeting with Curtis Sheets with Wintergreen Fire and Rescue and Police Chief Dennis Russell of Wintergreen about the services that they provide. It was basically on behalf of the Stony Creek and Mount residents to let people know exactly what they do, how they do it, how to participate, things like that. A few things were really interesting to that. The police chief gets an average of over 10 calls a day, which is over 3,000 in the course of the year. But of course, those aren't all infractions or things that necessitate action. For instance, they had over 70 bear calls this year already. So we'll draw a conclusion to that. Two things that they do have going on that I thought were particularly interesting that I was not aware of. One is that Fire and Rescue will do fire-wise inspections for the houses up there so that people will understand what they can do around the house, inside and out, to make sure that their residence is better protected in the name of a fire. Not just one that starts inside, but one that makes time to start and move towards them, which is really a valuable thing. They do that for free. They also have a program called Knox Box, which makes it possible if residents are not home or if they are not long-term residents there, where the Fire and Rescue can get access to their house without breaking a door, window, or to get in and get a little bit of help if they need to. Those are things that I thought were extremely valuable for people to know because a lot of the people that live in Wintergreen and Stony Creek area aren't even aware that those are options that exist. And they seem like great ideas that might certainly others may have thought about before me, but I haven't thought of them until then.
Excellent. All right, Mr. Barton?
Yes. A couple things. I wanted personally, and I looked for the county thing, Joanne Axler, who has worked really hard on the Gladstone Depot. And it was really nice to see her face glow. And she said, I think I could do this. I think I could. And I might. It's not a done deal yet, in a sense, but I want to mention. Tomorrow, I'm going to attend the Virginia Creo Awards, which is normally a board that is interested in employment. But the last several times, the talk has been about how to get people, you know, both the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, anything, whether it's McDonald's, is, you know, and it comes down finally where I say, offer more money. And of course, everybody's, you know, that is the answer. But, you know, that's not seemingly feasible. But I was curious whether you people have anything you want me to take with me to that meeting tomorrow, which you would suggest that they should do to help people find employees.
All right. So I just had a very, very large conversation with manufactured housing. Manufactured housing, this is my own private world, building houses. And I think there's a lot of home builders who probably would agree with me because most builders are limited to not, not really clients. Selling a house is now easy. It's about your output. How much can you actually produce? And, you know, we ask that same question all the time. Where is the workforce? Where is the workforce? And of course, we talk about the great resignation. Talk about pay. And I can easily tell you that jobs that were $14 an hour two years ago are now $24 an hour. And that's in a lot of different sides of construction. And so it's not even necessarily become a money thing. It's just bodies. We don't even know who's working. So one very large piece, and I think this is going to be an important conversation in rural communities such as ours, southwest Virginia, south side of Virginia, and these counties are already discussing, especially in the home builder world, is migrant workers. That is seemingly, it's very difficult to figure out the process of how, you know, but at some point, when you don't have much of a working population that exists in communities that have aged quite exponentially, that is becoming some of the only answers, especially for those blue collar typesides. And I think it's important, and I can tell you that the National Home Builders Association, locally, there's those associations, anybody that's related to that, are having those conversations about how is it that we can utilize H2A, H2B workers in our areas? Because at the end of the day, the reality that a lot of these jobs are is that they just, there's no. So.
Any one else have anything to offer?
Take that with you.
I'll take that with me. In the last few months, I've become a member of the Albemarle Charlottesville jail board. And I, what with Sheriff Hill once and with Candy a second time, there was an incredible accident that I saw on Route 29, a trailer truck that came across the median, and he was involved in that. So we didn't get the last one. But I think it's incumbent on me to tell you what I've experienced. Well, the first time I went there was the view of the jail itself. And the jail itself was built in 1971. And the park that was built in '71 needs to be redone. Now, along with that, what I have experienced is meeting of the person who runs that jail. Also, I want to say before I go on is the people working that jail were very complimentary of the people that they've worked with at Nelson County. Steve Carter and Candy and Sheriff Hill, et cetera. And what he would like to see is that the jail in which, first, one of the things that really impressed me was that I was introduced to the, his people who worked for him, you know, headed various departments. And almost every one of them had been there for 20 years and had started at the lowest level and were committed to it and were complimentary that it was a place in which they knew if they made a mistake, they would be, it would not be the end of them. Now, I worked at the detention facility, and the pressure is enormous. And it was, it was really nice to be here about places in which people worked in a jail and felt comfortable. Now, they're redoing that jail much of it, and it's going to cost a lot of money. And the state itself is going to contribute, what is it, 30% or something like that?
I'm hoping 25%. They haven't decided.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't decided. But I, you know, it's hard for me to, you know, I want to impart to you that I had a positive feeling about my experience in this facility and that they were committed to making sure, or not making sure, they were committed, that the law were in service and to treat the people in the jail as human beings.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harvey? Mr. Parr?
EMS Council, Mr. Reed just mentioned the Knox Box, and that was something that was brought up at EMS Council as well, not from a residential standpoint, but from a school facility standpoint in perfect timing. But they are hoping that that's something as they try to get the meeting started back up with the school system. And there's a school safety group that was meeting quite a bit before COVID. And COVID came along and that group kind of fell by the wayside. And it was Fire and Rescue and Sheriff's Department meeting with school personnel. So they're hoping to try to get those meetings going back up. One topic they do want to bring up in that meeting is trying to get Knox Boxes on the schools as well. So when those, an alarm goes off or something happens at the school, Fire and EMS can gain entry to the building rather than having to waiting, having to wait for somebody to come in. And then the other thing was the room that we just approved for loving some engine. So thank you all for that. But that's all I have.
Excellent. All right, TJPDC had a great meeting. Mr. Reed, welcome back. It's a fun time. The, this is a big push. Recently, we did become successful in finalizing the details for the $107 million for broadband outreach, which has now gone regionally all the way from here to, all the way from really the tip of part of Rappahannock to even Campbell County now at this point, Firefly's footprint will be. So that's a big thing, regional housing partnership. Please keep that date. I gave you all in your calendar for the Regional Housing Partnership Housing Convention. We are going to be talking about several different items. I think that'll be important. It's the displacement of rural communities are just the natural, just loss of young families. That's going to be a type of topic that we haven't really picked the title for. Just talking about rural communities that have lost general population. There will be a discussion point on short-term rentals versus long-term rentals. There'll be a discussion on zoning, what that looks like, accessory dwelling units, et cetera. So. I have a few other things. I'll save that for directives so that we can get, I can give a few more details on the short-term rentals. Let's go on and move to appointments. In appointments, we do have one person who has applied for the Nelson County Service Authority. That was Sergio Sanchez. Mr. Barton, that's your district.
Yep.
Do you want to put him on there?
Yep.
Put him, put a motion on it.
I moved Sergio Sanchez. He's going to the service board.
Okay, we have motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Parr. Any discussion? Any discussion? We'll do a vote by acclamation. All those in favor say aye. Any extensions, rejections? Tell Sergio he's got a job now. There, is there any other applicants for any other positions?
We don't have anyone currently for the Nelson County Library Advisory Committee. However, I did get an email from Susan Huffman that she is working on a potential North District person. I can't recall the name at the moment, but working to get that more definitive and hopefully we'll have an application next month.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to correspondence. Mr. Barton?
Yep.
Mr. Harvey, Mr. Reed, Mr. Parr. All right, moving on to directives. Does anybody have, Mr. Barton, you have a directive? Or, okay, I'm going to get to the directives here then. Mr. Reed, Mr. Harvey, Mr. Barton. I thought you said you had some, Mr. Barton? Or is that just the jail?
Reports.
Okay, got it. We have a few housekeeping items. We, that Amherst has inquired to me about doing a joint meeting to discuss the agriculture facility. What is the Board that would like to do that? Is there any interest in having a joint meeting to discuss the agriculture facility?
I think after today's presentation on, from Architectural Partners, I think it's the perfect opportunity for us to get together for the first time as the two boards and just review that and just have a conversation and make a decision on moving forward or not on this. But we've got some good information now to discuss. So they reached out to me as well, hoping to have a joint meeting to discuss. So I support it.
There's one person who's interested. What say everyone else? There's one person who's interested, what's everyone else?
I've been hearing my discussion, I haven't put everything together yet.
Okay. Mr. Harvey said he hadn't thought it all the way yet. Okay, Mr. Reed, Ms. Barton?
I mean, we discussed this before.
Yeah.
And we discussed going down, when we went down there, the people who ran that facility said how difficult it was to make it so they didn't lose any money and how dependent they were on the back of money to keep it going. And, you know, just in terms of the price tag on it and the needs of Nelson County, I voted against doing this study. So I certainly, I think it's time to end or talk about that, but I, you know.
Mr. Reed?
I'm not in favor of such a meeting. I have been pretty outspoken about my opposition to the project and could do so again, but won't do it now.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I think, you know, for myself, I think the discussion can be worth at least the discussion, we haven't even got to the dollars and cents. So Mr. Harvey, it's kind of up to you, do you want to be in the joint meeting or?
I've gotten a lot of interest and a lot of discussion very good lately and hadn't been a lot of positives coming out of it.
Okay. Does that a yea, nay?
Looks like a nay.
Okay, all right. So generally speaking, it's two members who are interested in the joint, three are not, so that will leave that discussion where that is. Moving on to joint school board, Shannon had inquired about doing a date in October. If everyone could open up your calendars real quick. I'm going to just throw some dates that work for me, see if they work for you guys. Shannon, when is your meeting in October? That's the 13th? Yeah. Yes, so the 13th. Can you come up front?
To help streamline the process a little bit, if we could look specifically at Mondays within the month of October.
How's everyone's Monday, the 17th look? That's after everyone's meeting.
I have a doctor's report.
It'd be in the evening.
And I'm out of town on the 17th.
All right, how about the 10th?
I'm good on the 10th.
I believe that's the holiday.
October 10th, almost. Okay. Then let's go to the 24th.
I'm free in the evening.
Mr. Barton?
Yeah.
Mr. Harvey, you're general. Mr. Par?
Yeah.
6:30. All right, so Monday, the 24th, 6:30.
I can run it back by my group.
Okay, we're going to pencil this in.
The dates that we were given, that was one of them that seemed to match for everyone.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Moving on to the next item, short-term rentals. This has been a hot topic. The county has taken this seriously, and there have been a lot of conversations in the background with individuals in our community. And recently, we had a, Mr. Reed, I hopefully you would concur, a good discussion with some of the stakeholders about the topic of enforcement. Learned a lot, learned a lot about the struggles of what some of the folks are dealing with today and also their input on those who are not paying the TOT tax. It does appear that there's just a lot of people who don't know that it's part of the process, who are presumptive that the platforms themselves are paying the tax for them. There's also some, I'm not sure if discrepancy is the proper word, but, you know, in terms of reserve, registering your short-term rental, you know, we found that according to the budget revenue that you'll have one group that is registered, then that registration counts for yours, so you don't have to register directly for your own Airbnb. So there's some policy that we need to make some adjustments on. All this to say, I think the county does have a little bit of ways to go, and this is now requiring the big meeting of a couple board supervisors, county staff, Commissioner Revenue, Planning and Zoning Council, to discuss some of these kickoffs and probably maybe potentially include a couple members from the public just to figure out a pathway of enforcement. There's a lot in Nelson County, and in just one zip code, there's about $2 million of regular revenue, just selling that Wintergreen Mountain all the way down to 151, $2 million in revenue a month. That's not TOT tax, but that's money that the county is likely not receiving tax on. So we do have an enforcement issue, it's pretty big. We've gotten some input from interior stakeholders of platforms, websites, consultants and whatnot who have helped answer this question before and how best to enforce, there likely is going to be a piece that requires this county to invest in a position directly and more than likely, mostly or solely based on short-term rentals and gathering data what the enforcement mechanisms are, and on and on and on. So I think at this time, we've talked with staff, we're going ahead and schedule a meeting, Candy, with Commissioner Revenue, Ernie and I, probably invite a member or two of the Planning Commission, I don't know if they're necessary for the enforcement side, but yeah, they should be included because this is on the bigger side of things after that. Planning and zoning, Commissioner Revenue, who else wanted this, Ernie?
I think that's it, but I would certainly like to see some introductory meeting of the lines on getting some resources together to look at possible regulations.
Yes.
Yeah, at the same time. Since we're all gathered.
So we can at least be prepared for the discussion.
And it should be a working meeting that, you know, the public can attend, but not be at the table.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine now.
Yeah.
I think at this point, that's fine. All right. So is that good enough directive for you, Mr. Reed, on short-term rental? All right, I think that's good, and we'll just figure out a timeline in the next few weeks, probably in October if I had to guess, because we have a pretty busy schedule.
October 15th, pretty busy too.
Oh, boy. We'll start figuring out today.
At least it's not March yet.
Yeah. All right, we got that, short-term rental, joint school board, Amherst, not missing anything else? I think I did everything I said I needed to do.
May I just clarify, you want to look at enforcement and also?
We're going to be starting about, talking about discussion of the backside of that because one thing that we've learned and just discussions with Commissioner Revenue and our staff is we could, even if we regulated it, we have no enforcing mechanism that exists because we can't even chase down the 400 people that have short-term rentals in Nelson currently. And so both these things need to happen together, or one before the other, we got to figure that out. So some things could probably happen sooner than later, such as the regulate, like the registration of short-term rentals per building, not per business, if that makes sense. Mr. Payne, I think you had some input with the commissioner on some of that.
Yeah.
Got it. There we go, so that'll be part of the discussion as well. Sound good, Candy? All right. Anybody have any directives other than that? Hearing none, we do have a closed session, Mr. Reed, you got your paper. You want to do a quick recess up? Let's do a quick recess. Five minutes. I know you had to go.
I did.
You had to go.